And you are live.
Well, good evening, everybody. This is Tim Terranova, Superintendent of the Victor Central School District. We've had a brief hiatus from our town halls. I'm hoping you're enjoying this unique summer, but we definitely wanted to get back together here on July 23rd to discuss the reopening of schools. This is the first time we've been on the town hall since the night of the budget vote, which was June 17th ironically. So I just want to thank the community publicly for the incredible outpouring of support and community involvement around the budget process. As you know, we had over, we had 60% vote yes on that budget, 60.48, I believe, which is a significant amount of yes votes, but very close to the, to achieve, just barely over the exceeding the majority or it's a vast majority of 60% that we needed to pass the budget, which we're very proud of. We know the community had a lot of opinions on that. It was a tough vote and our goal is to continue to work with our community as we move forward and plan financially. And I think I bring this up too, just because one of the things that we did around the budget vote, which was, was become extremely transparent, hopefully with the community around what our needs were and why we were really trying to get this type of budget passed. We were also utilizing the experts among us to support our best plans around the budgetary process. We certainly wanted to involve the community in that, and that is the same strategy we're using around the reentry of school and dealing with the COVID crisis. So tonight, what we're going to do, it's a typical hour. And I'm honored to have our pediatrician for the district with us, Dr. Toot, who is going to be joining me now on the screen. He's going to be with us for about, I'd say 20 minutes to maybe a half an hour. And then I'm going to explain more specifically our plans for reopening the schools in September and what that involves. And certainly you can add your comments on Facebook Live. We are broadcasting right now. I don't know if I'll be able to get to many of your live questions tonight just because of our special guest and then the information I'm going to go over with you. But we will answer your questions around this very complex topic, and I know really important topic to everybody within the next couple of days. So I encourage you to ask your questions on Facebook around this. So, Dr. Toot, it's a great, it's great to have you. If those of you that don't know, Dr. Toot's an outstanding pediatrician, works for the Panorama Pediatrics Group, graduated from the University of Rochester Medical Center, U of R Medicine, and then actually did his, what do they call it, internship case studies at Case Western in Cleveland, Dr. Toot? Is that, is that a?
That's correct. Yeah, it is accurate.
Then 33 years of practicing medicine specializing in pediatrics. So we thought that we want to bring him on. Dr. Two talked to our leadership staff last week and just has an abundance of information that kind of helps all of us as we plan forward through this pandemic. So Dr. Two, thank you for joining us tonight. I know you're extremely busy. Just, can you give us just a little background around the COVID virus and its impact that it's having right now, especially in our area?
Sure. Thanks for having me come talk to everyone. I appreciate it. It's obviously been a very controversial subject. There are a lot of people out there at other, either extreme. It's been politicized in many ways. There's people that think that schools should just open as normal and there's other people that think the school should not open at all. And I think that New York State has been very cautious in utilizing task force at the state level involving Board of Regents, the Department of Health, and have tried to come up with a relatively reasonable hybrid plan with obviously default mechanisms of things, you know, kind of go one way or the other. So, you know, we're obviously not going to have the old normal. We all experienced what it was like to shut things down in the spring and, you know, as tough as that was, I do think we learned a lot of lessons from that. Basically, you know, the state has taken guidance from the CDC, the Department of Health, and even the American Academy of Pediatrics has weighed in on all of this. The feeling strongly has been from a lot of organizations that don't really have any interest except for seeing kids be safe. They feel that what is really in their best interest is that they should potentially be back in school in a safe setting, a hybrid setting. Feeling being is that the education is better, but there's also some benefit from the whole psychosocial considerations. Overall, kids do not get as sick as adults. I do know that, you know, a couple of kids will end up getting that multi-system inflammatory syndrome that everyone was worried about when that came up a month or two ago, but that does not seem to have been taken off as, as much as initially suspected was going to be an issue, even though the kids that do come down with that can get really sick. Already there's been a few deaths from COVID in kids, but again, there's many more deaths every year from flu than, and then kids than there is from COVID. There's some controversy about them being carriers. Some studies from some of the schools that have opened up in Europe show that the carrier state is probably not as prominent, especially in the younger kids than it is in adults. I think when kids do get to be above age 10, there can be an issue there. And that's another thing that's taken into consideration is whether or not kids get sick and how sick they get and whether they end up in the hospital or whether or not they bring the virus home to potential high-risk individuals at home or in the community. So weighing all of that, the American Academy of Pediatrics and others felt that schools could be open safely. The concerns is that, you know, there's a lot of psychosocial emotional stuff that is being involved here. And if you look at the state ed guidelines, there's a lot of stuff about the emotional wellbeing and not just kids, but the staff as well. And any given, you know, previous status of what kids' mental health has been like, you know, 15, 20% of kids at one time or another probably could use someone to talk to and have some kind of diagnosis that would fit in the psychological realm. There's some estimates out here right now that this, especially anxiety could be raising to 30, 35, or even 40% of all kids could benefit from someone to talk to, having some kind of support. So this is something that, you know, we're worried about, you know, presently over the summer and we're certainly worried about when these kids transition back to the school setting. Like I said, the state ed guidelines has put a lot of attention into, you know, trying to deal with this in a proactive fashion. I think one of the major philosophies that we have for the school district is that it's more of a philosophy of mitigation than elimination. You know, we are not going to prevent COVID from entering a lot of different areas of the school setting. We're just going to do our best to try to prevent it. And if we do see it in the school setting to make sure that we jump on it aggressively and that there's something that we can do to try to make sure that it does not spread. The highest priority is to basically do this as in a safe fashion as possible. Obviously, you know, having isolation at home and quarantine, online learning is the safest. But, but again, the, the hope is from multiple levels, from the state to the local, so the, the school district that we can do this in a safe fashion. Some of the general concepts is, is that's going to be very important for everyone to buy in that if we are going to keep the, the potential of COVID spread to a minimum, that first and foremost, everyone has got to be in agreement, both the students and staff, that they have to stay home if they're sick. Fever being obviously the big thing, but unfortunately with kids, sometimes they don't have a fever. Sometimes they can be contagious even before the, the fever pops up. We're obviously going to be very tuned into anyone who's got COVID-like symptoms. The big ones would be obviously things that we've heard about like cough, shortness of breath, chest pain, things like that. Unfortunately, if you look at the CDC and what they can consider symptoms of COVID, things like fatigue, headache, body aches, in other words, a lot of flu-like symptoms, sore throat, and they just added in nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, as well as congestion, running nose. So unfortunately, that covers a lot of different illness symptoms that, you know, come this fall, we may see. So it's going to be very hard to sometimes tease out what's more classic COVID versus some of these other things. But again, we want to err on the side of being very cautionary. So any of these symptoms that do present have to be kind of considered COVID until proven otherwise. The only thing that really seems to be specific to COVID is the loss of taste and smell. And obviously that's something that is going to get a lot of attention very quickly if that ever develops in any of the students or any of the staff. So for the purpose of, you know, being very proactive with this, we're going to very strongly encourage, and this is from the state guidelines from state ed, screening before a kid goes to school. Every staff member, and we're going to try and encourage this for the students, should have a daily temperature taken at home. Anything over 100, and in the past it's been 100.4, is considered a fever. If someone has a fever, they, they need to stay home. And obviously if, you know, they have other symptoms that need to be addressed, an earache, a question of strep or something like that, you know, that could account for that. But anyone that is acting sick with a fever, has any of these other symptoms, is going to have to see their physician. The questionnaire will go out. It will be more specific. They will basically refer to as anyone had exposure to someone with known COVID disease in the previous 14 days. Has anyone been exposed to someone who's had COVID symptoms? But also has had a positive test. And again, unfortunately, the symptoms, as I just read off, can be quite extensive. Contact is kind of a question mark. It's right now considered close contact as being within six feet for, for 10 minutes. Some people say 15 minutes. The other thing that will get added on to that questionnaire is if anyone's had a history of high-risk travel in the previous 14 days, any of the states that have been added to the quarantine list. And obviously that's something that's been changing on a, on a pretty regular basis. If any of the questions that are asked in these screening tools for both students and staff are a positive, basically they're going to have to see a medical doctor. In the past, if they were sick, they just stayed home. Philosophy was you stay home until your fever free for 24 hours and feeling better, and then you could come back. If you had something more extensive, then you would see the doctor. If it's something that, you know, perhaps needed some kind of intervention like antibiotics, or again, had an illness that you're worried about hydration, breathing, you'd see the doctor. Now I think it's going to be very important for everyone to see a physician. The reason being is that 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 doctor's got to make a decision whether a test has got to be done for the COVID, because if the test is done, that's going to really dictate what kind of management plan is going to be implemented. If it's a positive test, the health department's going to get involved. They are going to be the ones that are going to help us decide, okay, who needs the contact tracing? Who do we put in quarantine? Do we shut down a class? Do we shut down the school? Do we shut down the school district? The philosophy for anyone who's got a positive test is that they obviously got to stay home. They got to stay home for 10 days from onset of symptoms, and they have to be fever-free for 72 hours, as well as symptom-free or symptoms dramatically improving for 72 hours. This is definitely different than the, the kid, if he went and had a negative test. And again, if he was still sick, but the test was negative for COVID, he could go back to school if he was fever-free for 24 hours and feeling better. And that again is the, the standard for other illnesses besides the COVID. I know there might be some resistance that if someone is sick or gets sent home from school who is ill to go see the physician. But again, if they got a fever or, and right now it's or, there's some CDC guidelines that, you know, it could be a fever and, and multiple symptoms. And again, that may be tweaked as we go on. But a fever or any of these symptoms of COVID, and they do not want to see their doctor, they're going to be treated like they had a positive test, meaning that they will have to stay home until they have a completely, they're 10 days out from onset of symptoms, and they must be fever-free for 24, I'm sorry, for four, for 72 hours and feeling better.
Dr. Two, again, if they see, I'm sorry, go ahead. So Dr. Two, so obviously if a child is feeling sick, we need to keep the kids home. We're going to have protocols in place around the nurse's office and some different protocols that I know our nurses are working on very diligently to, around a specific process of what to do when kids get sent down to the nurse's office, what to do when kids are waiting for their parents to be picked up, the whole emphasis of getting the, the COVID test and then waiting to see the results before coming back to school. I wanted to ask you a little bit just though about the social distancing, because right now, in a, in a few minutes, I'm going to share the general plan to the public around how we're going to open schools. And it does involve social distancing. So can you talk a little bit about the six-foot rule and the masks? And we're definitely going to have masks and just the whole concept of staying six feet and socially distant.
Yeah. So again, what I was referring to in that, in the, in the previous part of this discussion was if again, the kid is sick at home and not in school, but you're absolutely right that if a kid is sick at school or a staff member for that matter, they will be brought down very quickly to the nurse's office. We will have an isolation room. A nurse will don protective equipment. We will call the parents. They will try to pick up their kid as soon as possible. But the philosophy for the, the school setting is that, and again, this is true for even outside the school setting, is that we're going to do the best that we can to keep a six-foot social distancing. And when they cannot be done, then we're going to encourage masking. So being in the hallways, you're not going to be able to necessarily be six feet away from everyone, even though you're probably not going to be spending more than 10 minutes, you know, in, in close proximity. Matter of fact, it's going to be strongly encouraged that you do not loiter around and spend a lot of time talking with someone. But again, if it's within the six feet and you can't avoid the social distancing, then it's going to be mandatory that everyone wears a mask. Obviously, it's a long time over the course of the day for everyone to wear a mask, but we will have, and actually this is mentioned in the state ed recommendations that they should have what are called mask breaks. And for someone who, you know, wears a mask on a regular basis in the office setting, I can really understand the importance of, you know, being able to take a break and take that mask off. But again, it's going to be in a setting where you're going to be at least six feet away from someone else. The guidelines are very, very explicit. I mean, these are available. You can go on the state ed website. People can look at it themselves, but they have guidelines that talk in, in great detail about hand hygiene, respiratory hygiene, masking, social distancing, the setup, the student flow. So a lot of these things are, are guidelines, but each district has taken these into account when they are setting up a game plan for how these kids are going to move through the halls, how they're going to be set up in their classes, how they're going to deal with lunch, how they're going to deal with extracurricular activities. There's even guidelines about disinfecting and cleaning on a regular basis, but also if there is ever a COVID positive case, room would have to be shut down for 24 hours, the window open. Special attention to certain types of disinfecting and cleaning will, will be implemented under those kinds of circumstances. So, you know, again, the, the game plan is to try to do the best that we can to make sure that we don't get COVID in the school. If, if someone does come in and they do get sick, to quickly isolate their kid and get them home to go above and beyond as far as trying to clean that room as well as any other potential exposures to make sure that the health department gets involved and they need to get involved. And they end up taking guidance from them. And a lot of that may depend on, you know, what the community spread is and, and some, you know, other sequelae of how this all turns out. I really see, you know, potentially two extremes with somehow, we're probably going to end up in that gray zone in the middle. One extremely would be a kid does get COVID. Everything that we're doing works. This kid gets sent home. No one else in the, in the classroom gets sick. The teachers don't get sick. It seems like it's quickly identified, isolated, contact tracing is done. All the appropriate quarantine is recommended, but that basically the school comes out doing well. The other extreme, which we hope doesn't happen, and again, Europe would suggest that with their reopenings that that this is not likely, but if obviously we're doing all these things and a kid gets sick and it seems like, okay, that's spread. Two, three, four other kids in that classroom, the siblings, siblings pass it to their, you know, their peers. Okay, we did everything that we could to try to mitigate that and prevent it. If that happens, then obviously the health department's going to have to get involved and, you know, we might be right back to where we were in the spring. I, I, I think it may be someone in the gray zone. My real hope is that it's going to be more near the, what I said in the beginning, and that is we are doing everything we can to try to prevent it to get in the school. And if it does somehow get in the school, we're going to jump on it very aggressively to make sure that not always that kid taken care of, but that any potential exposures are dealt with in a appropriate fashion as well.
Dr. Two, what, right now, how many cases are in Ontario County? Do we know?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Are you seeing cases in your office in Monroe?
We are not.
Okay.
There have been a couple of cases that we've heard about in our patients. We're still at the point in our office where we're trying not to bring in kids that fulfill those COVID criteria. So to make that distinction of, you know, if you're sick and it may be or may not be COVID, treat it like COVID, but stay home. If it's really that you're bad enough that you may have to go to the hospital, like if you have, you know, obviously breathing issues, respiratory issues, then we'll send you to the hospital, of course, call ahead, let them know. But again, it's, it's, it's basically to try to keep those kids home and not bring them into the office. We do realize that once the school starts because of that philosophy of if they have a positive response to the questionnaire, or obviously if a kid ends up, it's, it's sick at school, gets sent home, we are going to have to start to see those kids in the office. And we are going to prepare ourselves to have obviously the, the protective equipment, all the hygiene procedures and things like that. And we realized that we're going to have to rev up as a practice. And I think that most practices are going to be of that same philosophy that we are going to have to do some testing in the office. That we're going to do a lot more testing. And if you really listen to the CDC and FOSH and all the other experts in the field, a lot of testing is really what is going to be important awards in, in general. I mean, they've been saying that, you know, for, for everyone, you know, throughout the community for a while now, but I think in the school setting, it's going to be about most important. So it may mean multiple tests every time your kid gets sick. But again, we get a real sense of what the incidence and prevalence of the COVID is in the community by doing that. And right now I know that it, you know, the tests are pretty much done on symptomatic individuals, you know, perhaps frontline workers and stuff like in the first, the, the first sign it's, you know, like the policeman, the fireman, people like that. But right now it's less than 1% and of the, the tests that they do are positive. The hope is they can keep it below 5% and you do not want to flirt with it starting to get up around 9%. That's the number that's going to get us worried. But obviously the local health department is going to be involved with the oversight of all of this. And they are going to, you know, be involved on a, on a regular basis, even though we have these state guidelines, there's going to be some adaptations as this, as the local health department, you know, assesses what happens when the school's open and what happens to the community at large.
And then can we just go back to, I know there's just some things that are going to be done. So we're going to increase ventilation within the buildings. We have to do that. We're also going to work with our maintenance staff to increase outside ventilation by opening windows. I'm going to talk in a couple of minutes about a significant increase in cleaning staff that we're going to need to hire between now and September, because currently our cleaning staff in terms of, they're great people, but we are, we've, we've talked about this on our town halls previously. We're inadequately staffed in terms of cleaners, just for a regular school, much less during a COVID situation. So we're going to have to significantly increase our, our cleaners to be able to do the sanitizing that needs to happen. What's your take on how often rooms and bathrooms should be cleaned during the day?
Again, I refer back not just to the state guidelines that have all that in there. And again, I think the head custodial people will, you know, be on top of that, and that is going to be part of a written protocol. But they also have CDC links in this guidance that gives very, very detailed specifics. They have a link to US Environmental Protection Agency approved disinfectants against COVID. They got the CDC link for reopening guidance for cleaning and disinfecting. They got a cleaning and disinfection decision tool. They talk about making sure that tables, doorknobs, light switches, countertops, handles, desks, phones, keyboard, tablets, toilet, restrooms, faucets and sinks should be cleaned and disinfected frequently throughout the day. They don't really have a timeframe on that. And again, a lot of that will also depend on, you know, you know, if there is a outbreak or, or something like that. But again, it's very important that they establish a schedule for cleaning for dealing with the changing, the heating and air conditioning system filters for opening the windows and ventilating, at least when the weather's good. So I, I would like to, you know, give you the details of that, and I have them right in front of me. But like I said, I think that the custodial staff has access not just to this, but the, the CDC, you know, recommendations, which are, you know, pages and, and very explicit and, and should be accepted as standard of care.
All right. We only have a couple of minutes, Dr. Two, that I'm going to go over the plan that we have that you actually were helpful with. I really appreciate that. Any closing comments just about from your expertise and bringing, bringing our kids back to school?
Yeah, I just think that again, we're talking a lot about the disease, a lot about the illness and the importance of that. I do really feel that, you know, again, I, I hope everything goes smoothly, but I do really feel that if the kids do get this disease, which would be tough, I do feel that overall they do handle it much better than the adults. I thought I saw something yesterday that, you know, it's estimated that maybe 40% of, you know, kids could have minimal symptoms or even be asymptomatic. That is concerning that, you know, that they could still be spreaders. But like I said, the younger kids are less likely to be spreaders than the older kids. And if, again, the older kids are the ones more likely to maintain the social distancing and the masking. You know, my hope is, is that even if there is a case, worst case scenario is that, you know, we, we have identified it, that we, we, we jump on it and that, that, that kid turns out to be okay, and then it does not go through the classroom. But if it does, I, I still think the kids are going to come through this a lot better than let's say, an outbreak in the nursing home, an outbreak in the hospital where you have a lot of vulnerable, high-risk types of patients. And then the other thing I want to bring up is that, again, one of the biggest reasons for getting these kids back in school is not just that, I think that the spring showed us that the education was less than ideal, even though we all tried to do the Zoom meetings and stuff like that. But the importance of the whole psychosocial emotional stuff that goes with this, that, that we're dealing with the kids being around their friends. We're dealing with the kids, you know, hopefully starting to get down the road in some more of their extracurricular activities. Some of the stuff that works on, you know, their emotional intelligence, not just their, you know, their, their street smarts, not just their book smarts, the things that we get above and beyond just, you know, being on a computer screen. So I, I hope that that's addressed very appropriately and, and dealt with as, as, as things start to, you know, open up and as we get the kids back to the school setting.
I appreciate it, Dr. Two, and I appreciate your expertise and coming on the, the town hall with me. You're definitely a resource that we're going to continue to use. So the public knows Dr. Two is our, our doctor that we contract out with. And he's working very closely with our incredible nursing staff in our district to get ready for reopening that I'm about to describe. And then we're going to continue to consult with you and, and thank, we are thankful for your guidance and your expertise. So thank you so much, Dr. Two. Thanks for taking the time.
No, my pleasure.
All right. And then I'm going to share the screen now and put up a little PowerPoint. Hopefully you could see this. Let's see here, where we go. All right. So it was great having Dr. Two on. Let me explain what we're going to try to do. I also have my phone on here with the, we have a large group. This might be one of our biggest groups. We had over 450 at one point watching, which I really appreciate. Again, this community is unbelievable in terms of its involvement. And I know this is an important topic. But I will be checking the Facebook comments. Again, I, because there's a lot of information I want to go over. I'm not sure if I'm going to get to many of your specific questions tonight, but certainly these are going to be questions that we're going to answer over the next few days. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the process we're using. So, so far, in terms of our process, we have been looking at guidance from the state. Dr. Two mentioned that. We have Department of Health guidance and New York State Education guidance. It's been slightly changing the last few couple of weeks, which has been challenging. But one of the things that they're solidifying on is this idea of social distancing and the real important need of being as much as possible six feet apart. If you're greater than six feet apart, you don't necessarily need a mask, but if you are within six feet, you need a mask. And just trying to stay that socially distant and not massing kids and people in areas like hallways and classrooms. So because of that, we are going to go to what's called the hybrid model, where we're going to bring some of our kids back some of the time, which I'm going to explain in a minute. But we're going to do that mainly because of the social distancing aspect of it. We're also using guidance from local experts like Dr. Two, as well as the Ontario, Ontario County of Health. We've certainly involved our community. I appreciate the over 2,000 responses from the community regarding our survey as well as the task force that's made up of community members, staff members and students and parents that we actually met today for two hours. And so that was, that's a great group to vet ideas with. And we'll continue to reach out to the community. And we'll continue to reach out to the community and certainly we're having contact with all our neighboring districts that are going through the similar process. I can tell you that, um, there is a strong feeling of neighboring districts to do a very similar model to the one I'm about to describe. And I'll explain that, like I said, in, in a minute, but we are trying to be as aligned as possible with those districts. Uh, last week, the leadership staff did some significant work. That's about 20 individuals in our district to, uh, really formulate tentative plans for reopening based upon the state and local guidelines. And then this week was, uh, has been a vetting process. So we have, uh, brought in over 25 K six kindergarten through sixth grade staff to look at that plan. We brought in over 25 seven, 12, uh, staff members to look at the seven, 12 plan. And as I just mentioned today, we brought in over 30 members of our community task force to look over both plans. We've made some changes because of that feedback. And then tonight is the, the another step in that where we're going to get feedback from the community through your Facebook questions and comments. What we need to do, what we're demanded to do by the state is to submit a tentative plan of reopening, uh, by Friday, the 31st next week in July. So we're going to take the work that we've done this week, frame it into a general framework of what we're going to do, which I'm going to share. And then that will go to the state. Um, and then Governor Cuomo is supposed to make a decision on the opening of schools somewhere between October or August 7th and August 8th or 9th. And he's going to take that, you know, I think he's going to make that decision. A lot of that decision will be based obviously on the experts and the, the work that the schools do in submitting their plans. This is the, probably the most critical piece of guidance regarding, uh, reopening pursuant to New York State Department of Health. Schools must ensure that appropriate social distancing, i.e. six feet and barriers. It's not six feet and barriers, it's six feet or barriers are maintained between individuals while in school facilities and on school grounds, inclusive of students, faculty and staff. So that's a part one. This is what, uh, really makes us go to this hybrid model where we're going to bring some of the kids back for some of the time because we cannot bring all our kids back. Uh, and certainly put 23 to 24 to 25 kids in a classroom and remain socially distant. We don't have enough staff or space in this district through the five buildings to spread everybody out uh, and get that social distance either. So that means that we have to bring some students back some of the time in order to make this work, which is what our attempt is going to be. Here's our non-negotiable safety issues, uh, safety, uh, challenges that we're going to make sure we do consistently. So socially distanced. Now you're going to see these little asterisks next to each of the, each of these names. Those are because these will cost, this is going to cost money, uh, as, as every district in the country that's opening will, will have to deal with. So social distancing will mean that we will have to cost money because we're going to have to do many different things to spread kids around the district, around the schools in the classrooms. We are purchasing thousands and thousands of masks which, uh, which are critical. Uh, right now we are looking at kids. Hopefully if they're socially distant in the classroom, they can take the mask off while they work. But when we're in the hallways and in areas like the buses or other places that, uh, are difficult to remain six feet, then that's when they'll wear their mask. So they'll be significant wearing a mask, but in classrooms, we hope to get to situations where they don't have to, kids and staff don't have to wear the mask within the classroom because they'll be socially distant. I mentioned before, we're increasing the ventilation in our buildings. We're also going to focus on having much more fresh air flow through our buildings. We are going to hire somewhere between eight and 14 cleaners. There is absolutely no way we're going to safely open the building with the current staffing we have for cleaning. So one of the major priorities of our district over the next six weeks is, is to hire more cleaners so that we can spread our cleaners out during the day and do multiple cleanings of classrooms and certainly areas like bathrooms to make sure, uh, make sure they're much cleaner than they've been in the past. And disinfecting, we're going to have significant hand sanitizing stations. You know, we're going to teach safety measures. We're going to teach wearing the mask. We're going to teach washing our hands. I know it sounds basic, but we're going to teach, uh, just the cleanliness factor and the importance of social distancing. Uh, and that's going to be really important. Uh, we are going to ask parents to check their children's temp before they come to school. We are not going to check every child's temperature when they walk in. Um, I know that's been out there a little bit, but that's not happening. We are going to be doing, uh, however, um, health screenings where we will, uh, be, be frequently reminding, uh, parents and guardians that they need to be checking their child's temperature and symptoms. We will, we would obviously check a student's temperature if they were symptomatic and, and like we would any child. But there'll be health screenings and occasional health surveys for our staff and students just to make sure that people are checking that. Again, I can't stress enough. We really need, if this is going to work, we're going to need students and staff to stay home when they feel sick. We don't know if it's going to be COVID or a flu or a cold or asthma or, or something like that. But when you feel sick, you need to stay home. And that's going to put a stress on our staff because we, we, you know, are some of our, our staff and teachers in general and staff and education are incredibly dedicated. But when somebody is feeling ill, sore throat, certainly a temperature, they've got to stay home and we've got to figure out ways to support the kids or, and staff when they're home in those, in those situations. Uh, we are going to work on movement of people in the hallways. We're going to, uh, obviously decrease the amount of movement of kids and staff, try to minimize large congested areas. As I mentioned before, we're going to have plans for our nurses' office. We're dedicating two rooms for each nurse's office to one room for kids who have COVID-like symptoms and another room for anybody else who needs, uh, health support. Our nurses are incredibly well-trained already this summer on what to do. We are going to be extra cautious about sending kids home if they have symptoms. And, um, we are going to be cautious around that and having kids tested. We're hopeful that once school starts, the testing will be much quicker and we won't have to wait days for results. That's a hope. Uh, I certainly can't guarantee that. But one of the best things besides having kids and staff stay home when they're feeling sick is to have quick testing that can be done within a couple of hours. So we can tell whether a child or an adult has it or not. But we are going to, we are implementing some pretty strict guidelines around that. And, uh, and that's going to be really important. Transportation and food service, uh, we have, we have our guidelines right now that do say that we can have up to about 20 to 25 students on buses. Now that's certainly not going to be the 60 or 70 that we typically have, but we have an incredible transportation department. And we believe that we're going to be able to transport our kids. But we're going to keep buses to a smaller number. The other piece to this is we're going to be putting out some information very shortly around parents who want to, I guess, opt out of using a bus transportation and agree to transport their children. You certainly don't have to do that. It's our right or it's your right and our, uh, need to transport your kids via buses. But if we can get a chunk of, uh, parents and a large percentage actually said so on their survey, if we can get a large percentage of parents to potentially opt out of transportation, if they can transport their kids, then that would decrease the traffic on the buses. They will wear, uh, people wore masks at all times on the buses. And we'll be sitting, uh, one child per seat. Uh, but we, based upon our work with the, uh, health department and, uh, our local school districts and BOCs, that model is, is, is appropriate and we can do that for the buses. Uh, food service are going to, is going to be adjusted. We're certainly going to offer lunch and breakfast where, where we've been before, but we're most likely not going to be sitting large groups of kids in the cafeteria. So we're already working on plans to support lunch, uh, in more of the environment of the classroom. But again, that has to be worked out specifically, but we don't want to have large groups of students or staff congregating in, um, areas. We're also going to focus on, uh, having a COVID-19 safety coordinator. All school districts will have that. And that person will have an important role of facilitating a lot of this, uh, work, especially around the non-negotiables. Uh, look at the, the bottom line is we're, we're trying to balance two critical things. Most importantly, the safety of your kids and the safely, safety of our staff. And then of course, the safety of your families when your kids come home. Um, and next to that, we're trying to get FaceTime, appropriate safe FaceTime with our kids because we know that if we can get our kids in front of us, even some of the time, that we believe it's better than having kids completely going, uh, online distance learning. So we're balancing both because we know our kids perform great and have much better experiences when they're with our teachers and with their fellow students. It would look, it will look different than typical, but it is something that we believe that we can make, uh, make happen. So here's our K six model. At this point, this is the model that we're looking at. Students are going to attend in person, uh, either Mondays and Tuesdays or Thursdays and Fridays for a full day. So, uh, and then every other week, uh, our K through six students will attend in person on Wednesdays. So what does that mean? That means that your child will come to school two days a week. Two days a week, uh, for, for one week and then three days the next week, and then two days the next and three days the next. So it's going to alternate two to three days. Our teachers at the K six level will be teaching students five days a week. Because they're just, they're going to have different groups, different days. Right now we're looking at a parent of Monday and Tuesdays and, and Thursdays and Fridays because of that connection between the two days and the FaceTime and, and relationship building that needs to happen. Uh, we're still looking at that. So that's still, uh, not official yet, but those are, that's what we're looking at in terms of the days of the week. Uh, we are, uh, there's also regulations in place for students, um, who are fragile learners. Uh, that, those include many of our students with disabilities or our ELL students, students with ELL needs. Those students, there's a potential to come back every day, uh, because, uh, the regulations do state and it's, it's a good thing to have some of our most fragile learners here every day. And if we can accomplish that, we will. So that's a strong potential. Let me explain a little bit about what we're doing, uh, when the kids are out of school. So at the elementary level, as I said before, the, uh, the kids are, the kids are going to be here two days to three days a week. Our teachers, uh, we're actually going to have a small number of teachers dedicated to online instruction, which means they're going to be creating online instructional materials for our kids. And there's, there's really three different, there's probably more, but there's three different concepts in terms of kids being out of school. So you have our kids who are attending school that will be out two to three days a week. They're going to be in person two days or three days and then out two days or three days. They're going to get their primary instruction in person. But we will have, and our teachers will, are focusing on, uh, creating lessons and assignments that then obviously will have kids finish work during the days they're not in school. They will not be able to get live synchronous instruction on the days they're out of school because our teachers will be teaching kids in front of them during that time. But we will be obviously communicating and, and working through the Google classroom. We're going to work on one platform at the elementary level, Google, Google classroom and to support assignments and communication with students when they're out of school. And that will be important because some of our kids will be out, obviously, uh, and some days Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then they come back Monday. But the, the assignments are going to be different, uh, the, you know, based upon the fact that we're seeing them two to three days a week. And then those assignments will have, uh, work and tutorials attached to it that will support the kids in their learning when they're out of school. And certainly there's going to be communication through Google Classroom to also support that communication and that work that kids are going to do, especially if they get stuck. Now, the second form of online instruction is we understand that there's some families that are hesitant to bring their kids back to school at all because of this crisis and we respect that. So there is an option for our kids at both levels, and I'll say that in the seven, 12 in a second, but there is an option for K six students to go full online learning if there's significant concerns by family members around coming back to school. Now, that online learning will not be, um, will not be the same as, uh, as if we were all out online because our teachers are going to be teaching kids in front of them during the day. We are going to dedicate at the elementary level, a small number of our coaches, our, our teacher coaches to focus completely online, especially in the preparatory materials and the assignments through Google Classroom. But you have to understand that there's going to be a need for significant independence by your students if you're completely online at the beginning of the school year. Uh, while we have other students come into the classrooms. That doesn't mean they're not going to have any contact. They're going to have assignments. They're going to be attached to a teacher, not just the teachers who are focused on the online assignment, but you're going to be on a class roster of a teacher with kids. Uh, there'll be communication with that teacher certainly, but there's, uh, going to be a very, and there's right now, there's an unknown factor on whether we can, you know, we can have the cameras in the classroom to, for kids to watch recorded lessons or live lessons that are currently going on during the day. We're not sure that that can happen right now. We don't know if that can happen for your kids who are out every day for this purpose. So if that can't happen, and again, that's something we're going to look at very carefully over the next few weeks, then there wouldn't be live instruction for the kids who are going fully online while the rest of the kids are in school. There would be recorded instruction. We'd figure out ways certainly to communicate, but there would be a significant independence factor needed with our kids. And there would have to be a timeframe to do that. We would probably ask for somewhere between a 10 week and a semester commitment to the online experience uh, of teaching and learning because we can't have kids come back and forth every week or two based upon that scenario. So you got your first scenario of kids are, are kids who are coming to school that will be out two to three days a week. There'll be assignments provided to support them and certainly communication. You have the second scenario, which is an option of parents to online support their kids every day out of school. Um, and we will have resources at the elementary level to support that. However, there is some significant independence and we are, that will be needed with your kids. And, um, we are trying to figure out ways to be possibly record lessons and those types of things, but that's an unknown at this point. A third phase would be, uh, certainly kids who become sick or ill and need to be out for a week or two or longer because of COVID or other situations. Um, we certainly are going to treat that like we typically do with any child. You're attached to a teacher already. Um, there'll be strong communication. Um, we can tap into some of the online supports for that. The challenge in this model is going to be if, if we start to have many kids go online, either because of sickness or other reasons. And it becomes a, a ratio of more like 60% of our kids in school and 40% out of school. That's where it becomes very difficult to manage both because our teachers are working full-time with kids and only a small number of teachers at the elementary level are going to be devoted to online learning. So that's where the issue happens is if two, if the large numbers of kids have to be online while other kids are in school, it gets to a point where it's not tenable. And so we have to monitor that, uh, very closely. As we move through this situation, we're going to focus on social emotional needs and academic skills with our kids, obviously both. Uh, we want to develop those relationships with our staff and students. I know the social distancing piece is, is going to be different. But, uh, our kids are unbelievably adaptable in that mode. And I know that we can continue to build relationships, kids with the kids and kids with adults. And that's going to be, uh, a very strong focus. And we're going to need to train our students and our staff and the, and the, and the last, and another scenario, which is we've talked about before, which is if large groups of students, unfortunately, and staff get sick and we have, and, and we have to have large groups of people out of school, then we would, based upon county and state recommendations, go to a full online program. Um, and that would be different than the online instruction when our teachers are teaching every day with kids in front of them. This would be a situation where we would have to go to where all kids would be out. Our teachers would be teaching online only. And that's where we would get into a much more comprehensive focus around both live and recorded instruction if needed. But we need to make sure we're prepared for that, both this summer and when our kids come to school. So one of the main focus areas in the first few weeks with our kids and our teachers will be talking about what that looks like online. How to navigate Google Classroom, how to navigate some of the other technological features and what, and the expectations at home so that we can prepare in case everybody does go out, which we don't want to have happen, obviously. But we have to be prepared for. So that's the K six model. In terms of seven, 12, it's very similar. Uh, again, we're going to keep to the same days that the elementary are, except for one exception. So in this case, we're going to go Mondays and Tuesdays or Thursdays and Fridays full day. And then we're not going to bring kids back on Wednesdays every other day at the secondary level. So they're going to go two days a week, every week. At this point, uh, we're going to save Wednesdays, we're going to free up Wednesdays for professional develop and, and online teaching experiences for our teachers. Um, and this is mainly because of two things. Excuse me. We don't have, um, dedicated teachers to focus online learning at the secondary level that we do for the elementary level. So our teachers are still going to be teaching kids four out of five days a week in person with a full schedule. But we, but we don't have that dedicated group of teachers that can do the online. So our teachers are going to have to support that. And we're going to do that through a lot of the work on Wednesday. The other thing is, you know, um, teaching is complicated at any grade level, but You know, teaching is complicated at any grade level, but. You know, at the high school, you're going to have or junior high, but especially at the high school, you're going to have courses like algebra three and physics. And all sorts of complex technology courses and other courses. That very few teachers are going to be able to provide online supports for. The good news is at the elementary level, we can work through a system of of of, you know, group work around. Third grade experiences and instructional experiences for third grade ELA because we have fifteen third grade teachers. That can support that. But the courses are so technically specific at the high school that we're going to need some dedicated time of our teachers to be ready. To support some of the online work. And that would include the online work for kids who are going to be out of school three days out of five, but in school two of the days. They're going to have significant work to do the other three days. And again, some of the elementary level, we're going to have to continue to communicate with parents and students. And make sure our assignments and tutorials are accessible through Google Classroom. And again, communicating with each other. But this Wednesday will give our teachers some time to do that. We also will have the full online learning option for kids who need to opt, who want to opt out. Of of full day instruction. But again, that's going to be a such significant independence level. The whole camera issue comes into play here. If we're able to get some specific cameras, we can do some live and recorded instruction of our teachers' teaching. That would support the students if they go full online. If we cannot, at least at the beginning of the year, then. Again, much of it will, it wouldn't be live instruction online. It would be the recorded instruction and and different platforms through Google Classroom to really support the learning experiences that the kids have. But Wednesdays will also give our teachers some time to focus on that. Just like the, just like the elementary level, we're going to continue to focus on social emotional needs and academic skill sets. And the combination of the two. And we're going to start the year with training for students on virtual learning practices because that's going to be really important. Just like at the elementary level. So to summarize, in terms of our two processes. Elementary is going to be here two to three days a week. Depending on the week. And secondary is going to be here two days a week. The other days, but the staff is going to be teaching five days a week. K six will be teaching kids in front of them five days a week. Secondary will be have kids in front of them four days out of the five, but the fifth day will be a teaching professional development day. And significant online work to support the secondary comprehensive nature of that secondary environment. So in terms of next steps right now. We are going to obviously look at further planning and the submission of the general plan to NICED by July thirty first. I'm telling you this general plan right now because we wanted to be as transparent as possible about what we're trying to do. So that parents and guardians can start to arrange childcare and what's needed to support this model. We will be finalizing student placements. In other words, we're going to be telling you. Which days that your child will be attending school and your children will be attending school by the week of August third. So that's going to be important. So that you'll have an idea of which days. Now, we're going to be very aligned at the elementary level. Our principals are working already very hard to split up the kids. Especially families who have kids in different buildings at the elementary level. We're going to obviously try to keep those on the same day. So that your family is going to school at the same time. We're even going to strongly connect at the high school level for families that cross between elementary and secondary. I can't guarantee a hundred percent. That your your whole, if you have kids across elementary and secondary buildings, they'll be on the same days, but we're going to try very hard to make that happen. If you have family hardship and serious conditions around. When you find out what days your kids are coming to school, you certainly can reach out to your child's principal and talk about it. I can't guarantee you that will change the placement. Because it a lot depends on the overall placement of kids, but we certainly will listen and see what we can do because we want to make things in this. Unique model as as, you know, we're going to try to take away as many roadblocks as we can around that. There has to be a lot of planning done. I know you have significant specific questions. I've seen him on Facebook. I appreciate the input. There's a lot of things that need to be worked out around the lessons that are going to be taught. How we're going to get kids here transportation wise, the opt out process of the busing situation and how that works. And how we then, we're going to have to very do some real strong work around, you know, the. The amount of cars that are dropping kids off now because I think it will be obviously increased if more parents are dropping their kids off at school. So we're going to work on protocols for that. We're going to work on a protocol for parents to, if you are interested in going fully online, knowing that there's going to be a significant independence in that part. We're going to continue to work on what that's going to look like as well as a process where you request that. That will be coming out very soon. But our staff and our leadership staff are going to do, are doing some significant work around those specifics. And then we're bringing our building staff in at each building to really plan out these these specifics because right now we've got the framework. We are certainly focusing on the completion of safety details. Whether that is the sanitization and the cleanliness of the buildings and the. And just the way we're going to root students and staff through the hallways. To all the specific protocols that we're going to utilize when kids feel ill. How we utilize the nurse's office, how we call home, how we, you know, when we bring kids back after they've been sick. And all the protocols around COVID testing where needed. We need to follow those guidelines strictly. In order to maintain our ability to stay open. So that's something that we're continuing to work on. We're certainly going to work on professional development with our teachers. We're inviting a core group of teachers in this summer. Not just to do the work I just talked about, but to really develop some skill sets and. And knowledge around both live and recorded instructional practices in case we all have to go out and do that type of learning. And then those teachers are going to help with our leadership staff, train all of our teachers during our conference days before September. So that we're able to really move quickly. One of the advantages of the hybrid model. Is that we can bring more kids back if our health department lessens the restrictions around social distancing. And we can easily move kids back into the full day schedule. Or if we have to, we can go the other way and and really try and and unfortunately go to. Go to complete online learning, but have a basis base ready to do that successfully. So one of the ways we're going to do that, as I said earlier, is to work with our teachers and students in the first few weeks around what that would look like and to get them better prepared, but also to train our staff before they get here. And then we're going to have another district task force meeting in August. And I'm going to have another town hall to speak to all of you roughly the week of August tenth with any updates that we have. So. So what we're going to be doing then in the next few days is the first thing we're going to do is read all of your comments, get your input. I really appreciate that. I know this is a tough situation and it's not ideal. But we're trying to, like I said, balance the safety of our our staff and our community and our our adults and our kids. As well as try to bring our kids back at a at a level that we can. I wish we could bring all our kids back all of the time. We're not able to do that right now because of the social distancing. But we're going to definitely look at your comments and continue to reflect on the information we got this week, significant information to adjust where necessary. Then, like I said, we're going to not only tell you what days your kids will be going to school, but we're going to have protocols in place for families that want to. Go completely online as well as protocols in place for students who are medically excused. As well as protocols for other things that are necessary really to get school started, including. Whether parents are willing, some parents are willing to opt their kids out of transportation. It's roughly a new seven twenty nine. So I unfortunately was not able to get to all to any of our Facebook questions. I know there's a lot out there, but we're definitely going to do that. You know my email. We're going to send out some information tomorrow that summarizes this information to the community. Continue to email me or call me if you have questions. And we'll continue to talk to one another and come up with the best plans possible as we move forward. Your building leadership is fantastic and they're going to support the specifics of this process. So if you have questions. You certainly can call your child's principal as well. Or your child's school counselor because we are definitely working on on coming up with a specific plans and we'd love your input. So. Thank you very much. We're going to start answering your Facebook questions and again, appreciate you taking the time and the large audience structure. Today and have a great continued summer. We're going to have another one of these. One of our town halls, like I said, in about the middle of, middle of August. So thanks, everyone. Have a great night. Take care.